Motion to approve.
So moved.
Set, I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. Larry, has anyone reviewed today's agenda? Is there any corrections or additions to it? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. For the public today, just so you know, the agendas are found in the back bookshelf. If you don't have one, that way you can follow along and see what we're going through today. PJ, consent agenda items, please.
Good morning PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. Consent agenda, quite lengthy, so settle in.
Do what?
Quite lengthy, so settle in.
It is.
Consent agenda item number three, conditional use permit review 9937 for Bob Young to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 9937 with 20 conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review 0934 for Lance and Diana Verholtz to review a fifth wheel camper to be parked in a vacant lot and utilized during the summer months in a low density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0934 with five conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review 1321 for Aaron Olson to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1321 with 11 conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1322 for Dudley and Isla LaPointe to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1322 with 10 conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit amendment review 1427 for Wayne and Phyllis Crell to review a single wide manufactured home to be used as a permanent residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1427 to the October 22nd, 2018 Planning Commission meeting to allow staff time to contact both the landowner and renter so the property can be brought into compliance. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1428 for Don Berrenz to review a vacation home rental in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1428 with 10 conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit review 1637 for Wade and Sherry Gresseth to review a recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters by building a single family residence on the subject property in a low density residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1327 with the applicant's concurrence. Item 10, conditional use permit review 1642 for Chase Gravett to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single family residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1642 with the applicant's concurrence. Item 11, conditional use permit review 1713 for Diana Bryant to review living in an existing single wide mobile home while building a single family residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1713 to the November 13th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant time to obtain and remove a permit for the single wide mobile home. Item 12, conditional use permit review 1722 for Pamela Phillips to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single family residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1722 to the December 17th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item 13, conditional use permit review 1737 for Ken and Nancy Denke to review a living in an existing camper while building a single family residence or cabin on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1737 with 11 conditions. Item 14, construction permit review 1518 for Dennis Zanstra, Real Estate Holdings. Steve Zantra is the agent to review placing fill in an area south of the project area on the subject property in conjunction with a grading plan for Elks County Estates, Phase 4 through 8 for the city of Rapid City. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1518 with the applicant's concurrence. Item 15, construction permit review 1703 for Mitch Morris to review the grading of the site and use of storage area to stockpile soil and concrete debris. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction permit 1703 to the November 13th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting with two conditions. Item 16, construction permit review 1712 for Lazy P Land Company Incorporated. Orville Davis is the agent to continue work initiated on a construction permit 1305, 1402, 1514, and 1609. The proposed project includes stockpiling of soil for future use on site and to continue the reclamation of a hay pasture west of Fifth Street. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 1712 with nine conditions. Item 17, conditional use permit 1835 for Lori Bell to allow a single wide mobile home to be used as a single family residence on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit 1835 with eight conditions. Number 18, minor plat 1830 for John and Polly Preston to create lots 1 and 2 of tract AR of Preston subdivision. Staff recommends approval of minor plat 1830 with 10 conditions.
Any items that staff would like to pull?
Number 15, sir.
Number 15. Membership, any items that you would like to have removed off the consent calendar? No? Any members of the public, are there any of those items 3 through 18 that you would like removed off the consent agenda to have heard separately before we make our vote? Seeing none, that leaves us with items 3 through 14, 16 through 18 is our consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item 15.
Sure. Item 15 again is construction permit review 1703 to review grading of the site and use as a storage area to stockpile soil and concrete debris. The applicant of record that we have on our staff reports is Mitch Morris. As of September 26th, Patrick Hall is now the owner of Mitch Morris's properties. So what we wanted to do is change the recommendation wording and the wording into the two conditions that are proposed. So I'll read through it, starting with the recommendation, which is on page 3 of 3 of that staff report. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction permit 1703 to the November 13th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting to allow staff time to speak with the new landowner and with the following two conditions. Condition number one, that the landowner provide staff with the necessary information regarding the above in section 4D and 4E of the staff report prior to November 6th, 2018, or notices of violation will be sent to the owner. And if the additional continuations of CP 1703 are necessitated by the landowner, each continuation will be subject to section 511X of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Just an attempt to get a hold of the new landowner.
Gotcha.
Who did you, who was, who did you say the new landowner was?
Patrick Hall.
Okay.
Any questions for staff on that? All right, if not, the current recommendation is, the new recommendation that PJ just gave us in wording, I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
So move. Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 19.
Item 19 is conditional use permit 1836 to allow for a guest house on the subject property in a low density residential district. The applicant and agent is Shadrick and Holly Howie. The legal description is Lot 1 of Broom Graff subdivision, which is a newly created subdivision. The current property is zoned low density residential and is 3 acres, which meets the minimum lot size for that area. Access is going to come off of, or is proposed off of Antelope Creek. Originally during the plating process, the highway department indicated that lots 1, 2, and 3 of Broom Graff had to have a shared approach. They've since changed that and allowed a single approach on the southeastern side of Lot 1, which is the subject property, but lots 2 and 3 to the south would have to have a shared approach. That was approved in early May of, early September of this year. There's currently a building permit for the subject property for a single family residence. At the time the staff report was written, it had not yet been approved. We were waiting for the FAA paperwork to be signed by the applicant. That has since been signed, I believe it was signed Thursday or Friday after staff reports were written. So that building permit, COPP 18581, has been approved. There is not a building permit yet for the proposed guest house. There was some concern and question about how many rooms or how many bedrooms that had. From what we can determine through the on-site wastewater construction permit and building permit, some of the notes that the applicant had written, it's going to be one bedroom. Now, there are quite a few stipulations and things that the applicant would need to follow as far as the guest house, and that is in section 318 of our Pennington County zoning ordinance. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. The only item of note came back from the county environmental planner. Just wanted to make sure the applicant was aware of how with guest houses, the septic systems have to be connected to the main system, or there has to be basically just cause and approval by the county to do a separate system for a guest house. There are five criteria that need to be considered when considering a conditional use permit. The first is that the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values within the immediate vicinity. This conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should have, should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity. There were no letters of complaint as of this morning for this proposal. We did receive a couple calls in our office about this, but they just basically wanted to know what it was for, not necessarily pro or con.
Okay.
Second item to consider is the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Third item to consider is that utilities, access, road, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The subject property will be served by a private on-site wastewater treatment system and a well, and access to the property will be provided off of an approved approach on Antelope Creek Road. All other necessary facilities will be provided during construction. There are a number of residents just immediately south of this, less than probably 200, 300 yards. So the facilities are there. The fourth, third item to consider, or fourth item, excuse me, is that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. From staff's determinations, there's plenty of room for them to meet the parking requirements for that lot from section 310 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Item E, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed conditional use permit by its very nature should have limited odor, fumes, dust, and noise and vibrations to constitute a nuisance. Again, the guest houses are under Pennington County zoning ordinance section 318, which are pages 6 and 7 of your staff report. The applicant was also sent a copy of this. With that, staff would recommend approval of conditional use permit 1836 with 12 conditions.
Any questions for staff?
I have one question.
Go ahead Kathy.
You know, I'm just curious about the addressing. You know, this isn't, this can't be a permanent residence, and it's, you know, you can't lease it. So why, why do they need a separate address? I mean, is it for emergency services primarily, or?
Exactly, that's exactly why, yeah. When they go out there, they want to know which one they're going to, because not all heart attacks have a fire associated with them.
I see, okay, all right, very good.
Any other questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, current recommendation is approval of conditional use permit 1836 with the following 12 conditions. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 20.
Item 20 is layout plat 1829 to create Lot 1 of Borglum subdivision. The applicant is Borglum Historic Center Incorporated. Dwayne Penkratz is the owner, and the agent is Ken Nash, who's in the office, in the audience today if you have any questions. The existing use of the property is vacant in signs and billboards. Let me see if I can get a better picture here, there you go. It's currently zoned general agriculture district and is about 21 acres. Staff would like to change some of the wording on page 3 of 4 of the staff report in section 3. Primarily where letter C and D, staff would like it to read that the property is vacant with the exception of the six billboards, single face located on the subject property. And then number 1, under that, size, distance apart, and setbacks are considered legal non-conforming. So basically wanted to get rid of the wording in C and just combine those two together. Okay? This was routed through the interdepartmental review, no items of note came back. The applicant has done this with other properties in the area to preserve the right to maintain the existing billboards on the property. For the purposes of layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request, as a layout plat is just an informal preliminary review. Other proposed subdivision for general scope and conditions. With that, staff would recommend approval of layout plat 1829 with nine conditions, and staff's recommended edits in section 3, C and D of the staff report.
Any questions for staff?
The non-conforming portion is merely the setback, or the fact that billboards are more controlled now?
Yeah, the size and the distance and the setbacks.
I see, thank you.
But the minute they go to change something and kind of increase that non-conformity, they would lose it.
Yeah, I understand.
And the applicants and landowners are aware that they've gone through this before.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
Gotcha. Any further questions for staff? Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, current recommendations to approve layout plat PL 1829 with the following nine conditions, plus the edits in the language in item number 3. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Motion to approve by Rich.
Second.
Second by Kathy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 21.
Item 21 is conditional use permit 1837 to allow an RV campground with an alpaca guest ranch, a store, and fiber mill on the subject property in a general agriculture district. The applicant and agent is Caputa Alpacas Guest Ranch and Fiber Mill, Glenn and Debbie Lep, and is 6.61 acres. We did have a presentation, I must have forgotten to put it in the file, so I apologize. The reason this wasn't on the consent agenda is it was decided to continue this after the agendas had already been posted to the web. The applicant is looking to do a kind of an agritourism operation with the alpacas that he has out there. People can come stay at the campground and then learn how that, the fiber is processed. Staff is actually meeting with the applicant today to go over some of the concerns that came back during the routing requests for comment period, and that's why this is being continued. There's some items that we'd like him to address prior to a full hearing, otherwise it's just going to get continued on and on and on. So with that, staff recommends to continue conditional use permits 1837 to the October 22nd, 2018 Planning Commission meeting with the applicant's concurrence.
Any questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this? Seeing none, current recommendation is to continue this to the, which meeting did you say?
October 22nd.
October 22nd?
It just next.
I just wanted to double check that I had that one on there. All right, is there a motion to approve?
So, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 22. Everyone's aware that we were given direction from the Board of Commissioners to set up a date for the Planning Commission hearing. Did everyone get a chance to read that email?
Yes.
All right. Is there, I've got, I got three responses, and if I didn't get your response, it looks like the 14th is the most friendly day for everybody. How does that, what's that?
14th of what month, sir?
I'm sorry, 14th of November.
Only that I had jury duty, and I don't know, you know, whether or not that impacts it.
Right, through the month of November, you've got jury duty.
I do have a comment or something. I live out there, and it's a very political issue, and I don't know if that means I should abstain from getting involved with it or not. I don't have an opinion on it at this point in time.
Right.
But I live in Coprook subdivision off of Wilderness Canyon Road, and all my neighbors have opinions.
Right.
So I didn't know if that would be deemed a conflict of interest or not.
That's determined by you. I don't, I mean, unless you have anything very specifically to personally gain by it, I would think not.
I would have nothing to gain, only things to lose.
Fair enough.
All right.
Any other input on this item? I think Rich, you said you could do the 14th, right, if I remember?
Yeah, I think the request was for a meeting on or after November 14th. Typically Wednesdays and Thursdays work better for me, but, so I think that if the 14th is the earliest available, 14th works for me.
And the 14th does work for me, so I know that's at least four of us. Who's the commissioner on for that? Are you going to be in November?
Well, actually, the 14th works not bad, because 12th and 13th are good. 14th, 15th, or 16th were good for me.
So 14th, 15th, or 16th? So I know the 15th and 16th are bad for me, so that puts five of us with the 14th. We never heard back from Jim, though, that's correct.
It would start at 9:00?
That would be up to you.
Well, then we would set, we could set the time. We need to set the time, because there was no time that was given for us.
I see.
Just the date, or just the fact that we had to set a meeting.
I see, I see.
So is there a better time for?
No, I have a commitment at 2:30 every Wednesday. I could get somebody to take my place for it, but I thought if this were at 9:00, maybe it would be done by 2:30.
I would hope so.
Hope so too.
How about you Kathy?
Well, it's, I'm not, I'm not worried about my schedule, but, you know, this, because there are so many, this is designed, this meeting is designed to take a lot of public input and a lot of public, you know, work during the day, so I thought maybe the thing to do would be to have it later in the day, so that allow people to come after work.
Ah.
Michelle, you have some input?
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I would anticipate this would be somewhat of a lengthy meeting, given the past history and the controversial nature of Crowell's mining of the Pearly Pit. Also, given the fact that the meeting requires at least 30 days advance notice, the best-case scenario would be for this board to set aside a significant period of time so that you are able to entertain all public comment and then make a recommendation, so it then can be moved forward to the Board of Commissioners. So that's the only concern I have with scheduling something in the evening. If you should choose to continue the hearing, then it's really a gray area right now, given the Supreme Court appeal, whether we'd have to start all over with another 30 days mailing to all the area landowners, two additional publications. So I think that was the thought behind scheduling a special meeting where this would be the only topic considered, in order that you give it a full hearing and then make a decision on that date. May I?
Go ahead.
Would it be, would it be reasonable, from your perspective, to schedule it, let's say it starts at some point in the afternoon with the expectation that it will continue into the hours after work to try to accommodate the, you know, allow for enough hours to hear everyone, and also to allow for those to come, people to come after work?
Absolutely. I just want to voice the concern of making sure we allow enough time so that there can be a full hearing and a decision on the scheduled date.
Uh huh, okay.
Any other input on that?
Chair, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I guess my only thoughts on this is, I think it could be a long meeting, but I think also, since we're discussing it, I think that how the meeting would be run would be a good conversation, too. I mean, we hold public comment to two minutes. I think that, given a little bit of foresight, two is, or three, if we kind of talk about that now, that kind of gives premises, because we could end up with multiple people talking multiple times and back and forth. I think the structure of the meeting needs to be set to where we can get through it.
Right. All right.
That's my only thoughts. I'm not, as far as, I think Michelle's right, as far as having the time, you know, I understand trying to do it in the evening to get the best results we can, but I think we have to advertise and we have to kind of plan for worst-case scenario, which I think we've had some of these meetings go 6 to 8.
Long.
Hours long.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a very significant amount of time.
Well, I'm more in favor of it starting at 9:00 in the morning. If they want to be here, they will be here, number one. And number two, I mean, I just joined the planning commission. Hasn't this issue already been beat to death, so to speak?
It's been heard before. It's been heard before.
Multiple times.
Yeah. I mean, so we're looking for new comments or people to repeat the old comments? I'm just trying to understand.
I think everybody that spoke before is going to be here in opposition. They're going to express their opinion one way or the other, and it's pretty tough to sit back and say, you can't, we don't know what they said before, so we're not, we're not going to limit the input.
I see, I see.
And I guess, I understand that we needed a lengthy enough time, but I think that it's, it really needs to be at least part of the meeting after work hours, because, I mean, it's not so easy for everybody to just leave, because you never know how long you're going to be sitting there waiting for your turn to talk. So I don't think it's quite right that you can allow people to come over the lunch hour, for example, or something.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I just want to emphasize what Commissioner LaCroy just stated, and that is that this is a new application, and it needs to be decided solely upon the evidence and testimony presented at this, at the special hearing, as well as the current application.
I see.
Right. Any other input on, on this item? I agree with having a limited speaking time for all those involved who might show up, assuming that, you know, we packed the room. If the room is not packed, then it can be changed at that time. I mean, if there was only 10 people here, we could definitely adjust that. But if this room is packed, like I've seen it before, dealing with this particular topic, it would be wise to let them know that ahead of time that they may only have a 3 to 5-minute speaking timeframe.
I would also suggest the signup sheet.
Signup sheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Staff will help you take care of that and track time during the meeting.
And we'll track time.
We'll have that light system up.
Any other?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I agree that it might be harder for certain people to get here at certain times during the day. So if we wanted to start in, in early afternoon and let the running, the meeting run until later on, I mean, we can certainly do that. So, you know, if we want to go Wednesday at 1:00 or something like that, I'd be good with that.
If we're going to try to run it over a lunch hour, wouldn't we maybe consider starting at 11:00? Because then you can catch people if they decide to come in during their lunch hour, just out of curiosity. I mean, I like what you're talking about, starting a little bit later, but I'm wondering if, trying to catch them a little bit earlier, so that, you know, if they start their normal work hour at 8:00 and they take their lunch hour at 11:00, 11:30, they can maybe come around and try.
Aren't the bulk of those people retired out there?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. But to me, the problem, I mean, it sounds good, trying to do lunch hour, but, because they don't have any assurance that when they come, they get to speak right away.
Right.
I think that, that they could still be sitting there and they have to get back. So I'm not sure that that is very practical in a sense. I mean, I guess I don't really see a problem, starting with, you know, from 2:00 to, assuming we're going to be here till 8:00, or, you know, like 1:00 to 8:00, or, you know, 1:00 to whatever the, it seems to me it's fine to straddle those afternoon hours and into the early evening. I don't want to be here till 11:00 at night, but.
Can I propose a question? Well, I was just going to ask a question, if you don't mind. So if we start at 2:00 and let's just say, I don't expect it to happen, but let's say we get through everybody by 3:00, are we going to sit here and wait till 7:00? Are you wanting to put specific timeframes on it? Kathy, is that what you're looking at?
Well, I think that, I don't know. I guess that's a question, too, that, but I do think there's needs to be, people need to understand that if they come, they'll get to speak, and they may not be able to come here until after their work, so, yeah, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that question, really.
Go ahead Lloyd, sorry to cut you off, I just wanted to make a clarification.
No, just from some experience, you know, just because the meetings from, starts at 9:00 and say we finish at 3:00 or something, saying that that's the only time that they have a voice, to voice their concerns, is wrong, because they can email us, they can send letters, they can do a lot of different things, because a lot of people, that's a kind of a preferred way, instead of having taken time out of their day, because really,
to come to a meeting like this and not know what's all going on could drag out. So trying to conform the meeting to that part of it. Some of the problems it creates is not only staff time. You start running into overtime. After five, we may not have legal to be able to stick around security, that type of thing. I think if you give enough notice, they can plan for it, but also make sure that we take written and email comments also.
Like we do any?
Yes. I mean, kind of stress that. So it's I don't think we're trying to limit or prevent public comment. I think we just need to reinforce that there's more than one way to do it.
Correct. Any other statements?
If we were to go that route, then in the notice, can it be explained that we would accept emails and letters of record?
I'm not sure about that. We usually don't put that in there. People just do it anyway.
I see.
Want to treat it any different than anything else if we didn't have to?
I'd say that's pretty much standard. Whenever you put out the notices, you still get your letters coming in, your emails coming in. I think everyone knows that that's the appropriate way to to contact you guys.
And when this issue came up before, were you in your position now?
Yes.
Okay. So did you receive emails and letters?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Tons, if I remember. Lots.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
Based on what Lloyd said, so maybe starting in the morning is a better option for purposes of the staff and security and everything else that has to happen to make the meeting go forward. That being said, I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak that wants to speak to. So I'm flexible. We can start in the morning. We can start in the afternoon.
Any further input? I will say as an individual who used to start my workday at noon, there's a lot of individuals that start in the afternoon. So you, if you're worried about isolating those who work in the morning, then you have to worry about isolating those in the afternoon. You're never going to make everybody happy. We know that, sitting up here. So I think it's just best if we choose a time. It's going to be at least thirty days notice. Individuals can make appropriate planning if they would like to be here to speak with us, or of course, they can send in their letters or their emails. But thank you for that thought process. So as we've discussed this, I see that we have the fourteenth. That seems to be the most acceptable date as far as getting the majority of us here. We've discussed the structure being three to five minutes for individuals to be able to speak on behalf of that item, depending on the number of individuals that are here. We'll have a signup sheet and a timekeeper all set up. The only thing is we've got to determine is the start time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lloyd.
I would suggest keeping it at nine, starting at nine because that's what I think the public expects most meetings to start at. At nine, so it's not like changing things around. They know it's a common practice, so we're not changing it around. And I think that gives us all plenty of time to finish what we need to during the day because we may, we're going to have to take breaks. We could end up having to take lunch to take some breaks, that. But mainly just for consistency is why I'd say nine o'clock because normally commission meets at nine. Planning commission meets at nine. And I think it would work best for all involved, myself.
It's the standard routine that everyone's ready for. That seems fair to me.
Was that a motion?
Well, I didn't hear a motion. I just think he was giving us his support on that to show.
Why? I move we start the meeting at nine AM on Wednesday, November fourteenth.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We have our special meeting set for the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Say again, sir?
Were there no comments from the floor?
For setting the meeting at this time, no, sir. We were directed to set a meeting for that particular hearing. So we were going to set. We needed to set a meeting that met the criteria of advertising.
We just discussed the time of the meeting. It took about fifteen minutes. I had some input regarding the time of the meeting. Ever invited anyone from the floor to make any?
Okay, sir. Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that. But we needed to set it for when we're going to have the majority of our of our membership here and what follows most consistent for what we're already doing.
I represent a great number. And I had some input. I would, of course, would have liked the option to say something before the motion was decided.
Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome to come up during public comment and give those comments as well, sir.
It's already done?
Okay, you can be on record then. Item number twenty-three, County Board report.
Item twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting. Just one quick update on the Sapinski vacation home rental request in the PUD. That came up for a second reading. There were the neighbors were here and also they brought a lawyer, the applicants and the or the landowners and the agents were not present. So the concerns of the neighbors were heard. The lawyer was given time to speak and it was continued again for the second hearing on October sixteenth for the board meeting. So a final decision hasn't been made yet.
Okay. Any questions for staff? All right, items from the public. Any individuals like to say anything? I guess not. Items from the staff? Item A.
Item A is building permit report for September of this year. Single family homes are down about twenty-one percent. We've taken in fifty, well, we've issued fifty-four single family resident homes compared to sixty-eight this time last year. Cell phone towers, again, like mentioned up last meeting, that's up over seventy percent. This isn't, sorry, I should clarify that. It's not just towers. It's also changing out antennas and putting in new equipment in the little shacks that are at the bottom. So probably a change in technology and that's why we have such an increase. Also, carports and garages are up eleven percent over this time last year. We saw a little bit of a peak after the last hailstorm, which is a normal thing. Signs are up considerable from twenty-one to twenty-eight over this time last year, over thirty-three percent increase. And we've take, we've issued as of the end of September, six hundred and forty-six building permits over five hundred and seventy-two this time last year and with that'd be a thirteen percent increase in the number of building permits.
Any questions? Item B?
Item B, on this past Friday, environmental planner, planning supervisor and environmental planner and our planner one held or put together the biennial onsite wastewater treatment system installer training over at the Journey Museum. There was about a hundred.
Or about a hundred and twenty.
About a hundred and twenty participants. They were there all day to get their necessary training. A lot of great comments about the location, about the trainers, and especially about the food.
Especially about the food.
So.
All right. Any questions for staff on that one? What'd they have for eat, to eat?
It was catered roast beef, mashed potatoes, and lots of other goodies.
Oh, nice, nice, nice.
Very good recipe.
All right, item C?
Item C is not necessarily for discussion, but just in a request, just to consider the draft comprehensive plan. The first hearing is, we're looking to schedule that for the second meeting in January, which would be January twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen for for the planning commission. So.
So that's scheduled already for that?
Well, you already have a scheduled day, meeting that day. We're just going to put it on the agenda, make sure you guys are aware. As you all have a hard copy of the public version, it's also been available online for over a month. So it's been in the paper a couple of times just as an announcement that it's there. But once we have the official hearing date, we'll make sure that we have it noticed properly in the papers.
And that's what I handed out those business cards on?
That goes to the website where people can get a copy of what you guys have a version of. The other reason that we're making sure that there's no opposition to that date is because the consultants need to be here. Contractually, they have to be here for the first and last hearing.
Okay. Go ahead.
So in terms of the timeframe for public comment, does it extend through this hearing on January twenty-eighth or is that there, is there a date forward where they're supposed to?
Public comment can go all the way up until the vote is taken to approve it.
Okay.
And that could, so they've already had over two years to comment on the process now that the document is created. People are commenting online, not at the rate that we would, we would hope. But people can comment all the time. This is just an extra amount of time between when Matrix can come out and when we can hold our meeting and when the document was done. So we're, we could hold the meeting this month if we wanted to, but we're looking for a little extra, just give us some extra time. With the Matrix schedule, our schedule and special hearings and holidays, we figured January would be a good time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Help me out with the process of this. Is this going to be like ordinance amendments where we're going to go through this thing? How does, how does that typically go? Just so I'm aware of what I need to prepare for.
I think that's a bigger question for PJ because I've never gone through this entire process. It's a whole new thing for me as well. How does that work? I mean, are we going to go line by line? I think that's what you're asking, like we did.
I wouldn't go line by line, maybe section by section or something like that, but I'm going to read this word by word. If I have questions or comments, do, would it be a better use of time for me to submit those things online or wait till January to go through some of those things?
That's a good question.
Well, that'd be completely up to you, how you want to structure that part of the meeting. The consultants will be here and give an overview of everything right off the bat.
Okay.
And then how you want to go through it, section by section, line by line, will be up to the commission. We've never, my career, we haven't done a comprehensive plan. It hasn't been done for over ten years, so.
Okay.
It won't be something that's going to go fast.
Ultimately, this board's going to make a recommendation on whatever the final document is to the county board for approval.
Correct.
Understood.
Is that going to be the only?
Sorry.
Is that going to be the only item on the agenda that day? Probably not, is it?
Probably not.
Fair enough.
Can be a start.
Just figure I'd ask. So they're going to give a presentation about it, so there may be a lot of questions that day.
Their presentations are usually half hour, forty minutes.
Okay. So get ready for at least a decent meeting that day. On the twenty-eighth or whatever final date we set. Any further questions? All right. Item twenty-six, items from the membership. Anybody have anything, any meetings?
I'm still on jury duty here. And so I don't know. The next meeting is when? Two weeks from?
Twenty-second.
Today, so I may or may not be there, but I will let you know when I know.
Fair enough, Kathy.
Yeah, I'd like to understand better about why there wasn't public comment to that, to the item number twenty-two, scheduling a meeting. I know that there's going to be questions about that. And I'd like to be able to understand that so I can respond intelligently.
Okay. I think, I think from our perspective, we talked about it when we said, you know, if we schedule it at nine o'clock in the morning or if we schedule it at two o'clock in the afternoon, either way, we're not going to make everybody happy. So if you choose one or the other, you know, one group, the afternoon shift or the overnight shift or somebody, they're going, everyone's going to have to make a determination whether or not they can make it to that meeting. It's going to be notified at least thirty days in advance. PJ, with that, with that date, how many days in advance is the notification actually going to be out, you know?
It has to be thirty days.
It has to be thirty, but are we looking at by the numbers, is it going to be like thirty-five days notification, forty days? I'm just wondering what the actual.
But I guess my question was really primarily procedurally. There's no requirement to have public input on these kind of motions?
Michelle Hoffman, on behalf of the State's Attorney's Office, this really didn't even have to be heard in an open forum. The scheduling of a meeting is not subject to the Open Meetings Law. This was just put on the agenda for commission discussion out of matter of convenience versus numerous back and forth emails as to what date would best accommodate all of the members of the commission. This is not substantive and as Commissioner Lassiter pointed out, this was per the board's direction for this commission, simply to schedule a special meeting and the, and bottom line is, is when can this meeting be held with the most representation from the commission? It's not a substantive item.
I see. Okay. So because it's not a substantive item and it's not subject to open meeting laws, that's why the, I don't know, is the requirement to allow public input, is it?
Well, I'm not sure why there would be public. Do you, any other special meeting? This is just about when this commission wants to meet. I'm not sure that that's an item that calls for public comment.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that I have the right information so when people ask me about it, I can respond appropriately.
It doesn't prohibit you from entertaining public comment on the scheduling, but the reality is, is this item was simply placed on the agenda so that, for this commission to select a place and time for that item to be heard.
Okay.
Right. Because ultimately, the Board of Commissioners could have directed a date and time for us, if I understand correctly. Is that correct, Michelle? I mean, they could have just said, we're calling a special meeting and given us a date and time that we would have to meet for that or if they wanted to, or no?
The ordinance simply states that either the planning commission or to schedule a special meeting, it requires a majority vote by either the board or the commission. That's, that's all the ordinance states. But this is just, this is a scheduling matter for the commission.
I'll make one comment. If I remember right, the direction the commission sent was to have the chair set the meeting of the planning commission was the motion. So I, Kathy, I think what you're, what you're saying is I think he could have taken public comment if he'd wanted to, but I think he just it was between this board that needed to make that time. You know, and, and I think as, as the young gentleman said, it took us fifteen minutes to come around to what we, what we thought would work best for everybody. So he may be you know, a little upset that they couldn't get involved, but it, and really, it's this commission that's got to make the decision to have that meeting, how it's going to be run. And as Ms. Ms. Hoffman just said, I think, I think we, we did it right. So I mean, maybe a bit a little upset, but I think sometimes we need to deal with, it was just the direction to set that meeting. And we have, I think we didn't do anything thing wrong, but.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that anything was done wrong. I just, just we wanted to understand it better.
Right. And I, I agree, but I think, I think we did a good job with that motion, so.
And I think we talked about many of the different aspects that probably would have come up. You know, the morning shift people, you know, if we did it in the afternoon, how is this going to affect? If we did it in the morning, how is this going to affect? You know, do we set a time from start to end? Well, if you do that, then this is what's going to happen. You know, I think we talked through a bulk of anything that someone could come up here and question and say, hey, did y'all consider this? Did you consider this? I might be wrong. I'm not going to say I'm a know all on that. But I think we, you know, as, as the commission here, we, we said, okay, I think this is the best way to do it because it's going to meet this amount of notification time. People can plan for it. And, you know, some of the points is when we get started, we might, if we started at two, you know, security is going to be an issue and things of that nature. So I think we didn't, I think we made the right decision starting it early because if it goes till three or four, then at least we still have the staff and support here as well. So. Is that, time to clarify?
Oh, no, I, I mean, I know that you're thinking. I just was curious about the process. And so I think I've got the information.
I think Michelle did a good job explaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I think there's also concerns since this is a scheduling matter that we didn't want it to devolve into a discussion on the merits. Certainly, the applicant's not here. Other members aren't here and you run the risk of, of any statement becoming a statement on the merits of the application and that's not the intent.
Right, yeah. Speaking of that, when do you both think that we, in preparation for that special meeting, we will see the application? And the staff report or however that's going to work. Will it work just like another agenda item here?
PJ Conover, County Director. We can, once it's ready, we can get it out to you guys. Yep.
I think that might be, I would, I'd appreciate that anyway, to give a little more notice than, you know, than just a couple of days.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They have something like this, yeah.
All right. Any further questions on that? Any other items from the membership?
I just got one more comment.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Thanks, Michelle, for clarifying that because that makes a lot more sense. Now it's coming full circle that, you know, if we would have taken public comment on just setting a meeting and something had been said that the applicant on just setting a meeting and something had been said, that the applicant's not here to be able to respond and so forth, so I think we did, I think the chair did the right thing by keeping it within, because that chance of something, the fairness kind of gets thrown out there. So I think, thank you for doing, doing that.
Thank you.
I concur.
Anything further? Oh, go ahead, sorry Rich, did I hear you?
I just said I concur.
Oh, thank you. Anything further? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carries, thank you.